We don't want to start early, is that clock right? Okay. Okay. Randy, I saw you out there tooling on your bicycle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda, any changes, deletions, or otherwise?
I'll move. Go ahead. I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have an operating menu, and the first thing up is proclamation. This is a proclamation of the city council, the city of Brisbane proclaiming September 2014 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men, aside from skin cancer, and it is estimated that one in seven men will develop this disease in their lifetime. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that there will be 2233,000 new cases of prostate cancer in the USA in 2014, resulting in an estimated 29,480 deaths. And whereas it is estimated 23,010 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in this year, and it is estimated 3,380 California men will die from this disease. Whereas African-American men have the highest prostate cancer incident rates in the world, and their prostate cancer death rate in the USA is more than twice that of any other ethnic group of men. And whereas recent studies suggest that a diet high in processed meat or dairy foods may be a risk factor, and obesity appears to increase risk of aggressive prostate cancer. And whereas the survival rate approaches 100 percent when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 28 percent when spread to other parts of the body. And whereas treatment options for prostate cancer vary depending on a man's age, stage, and grade of his cancer, as well as his existing medical conditions. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men should have an opportunity to make an informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer based on their personal values and preferences. Now therefore, the city of Brisbane designates September 2014 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, dated this day, September 2nd, 2014. And we don't have anybody to accept this tonight, huh? Okay, so, Sherry? Okay, and we can send that to the American Cancer Society? Yeah. Thank you. Oral communications number one, does anybody wish to communicate with the council on anything that is not on the agenda? Hello, Michael? Okay, not seeing anybody? We'll move on to consent calendar.
Bill of approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and two items we have is receive a monthly investment report as of May 31st, 2014, and also adopt ordinance number 589 waiving the second reading, adding chapter 8.41 of the municipal code, and this is concerning water conservation. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, new business. Item A, consider authorization for city manager to issue a request for proposal and execute a consultant agreement to provide architectural review services regarding the appeal of the planning commission's approval of design permit, DP-2-14 of 7,000 Marina Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Earlier this month, the planning commission approved the above referenced design permit application for exterior buildings at the office building, or exterior modification at the office building at 7,000 Marina Boulevard, commonly referred to as the Dakin Building. An appeal has been filed, which is in front of you this evening. In reviewing the appeal, staff noted that it raises both subjective design issues and technical questions as to feasible design alternatives that should or could be considered to the project. In order to facilitate the council's review of this appeal, it's recommended that the city engage in architectural services from an outside independent peer review to analyze the design and develop or identify potential alternatives to address the issues raised in the appeal. Again, as shown in the staff report, recommending a not to exceed amount of $7,500 for this work, and would recommend that the city manager be authorized to send out the RFP and engage the consultant to allow for the more timely processing of this appeal and getting it back before the city council at the earliest possible time. So with that, staff's recommending that the council authorize city manager to issue an RFP and execute a consultant agreement to provide the architectural review services regarding the appeal. That concludes staff comments, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Council questions. Cliff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we decided not to move forward with getting the expert opinion for the design review, the council as a whole could take up the matter at the next council meeting and decide themselves on design review of the building?
That's correct. We'd set it for hearing, and yes, we'd set it the next available council agenda.
All right, I mean, David, could you explain what we can talk about tonight? And I just want to make clear that I did visit with the property owners this afternoon because I wanted to go out to the site and see for myself what the building looked like. I've only seen it from the outside really until today, so it was helpful to get that information.
Council member Lance, what's on the agenda for tonight is a procedural issue. The merits of the appeal and the response to the appeal will be considered by the council, but that will be at the time that the matter is set for hearing on the appeal. Tonight's agenda item is only on the decision to retain or not retain, authorize the city manager to execute the contract for the expert services of the architect, and then to move forward in setting the appeal date depending on what the council's decision is on that. So the discussion should be limited to the retention of the expert architect services and the timing and setting of the appeal hearing.
Okay, so what do, you know, if we move forward with contracting this firm, what types of information could we expect to receive for the $7,500?
As indicated in the, it's a very brief scope of work, but basically the two fundamental issues, one are to evaluate the implications of the proposed design modifications on the architectural integrity of the existing structure. That is to get at the point of required design review findings that need to be made to approve the application that were made by the planning commission, and/or the subject, at least part of the appeal, that those findings were not supported by the facts of the case. So it would address that question of the findings. The second then being alternatives, design alternatives that weren't considered. Again, that's one of the appeal items, that there were design alternatives that could or should have been considered to have been more in keeping with the design of the existing structure. And then that outside architect could evaluate, you know, if such design alternatives exist, what they might be, and provide both of those sort of sets of information to the council for your use and deliberations on the hearing.
Okay, so in a sense, it would just be their expert opinion, yeah, subjective, you know, I mean, what they think would be appropriate for that particular building? Okay, all right, thank you.
Done it, Cliff?
That's it for staff, yes.
Anybody else? Laura, you have any question?
Well, I haven't had a chance to visit the inside of the building. I wasn't available today, and I think it would be, you know, my suggestion that the council as a whole can have the opportunity, you know, through a publicly notice meeting to meet and onsite with the owner and get access to the property so that we can all see it from the inside. Because I certainly think that information would be helpful. And what I'm wondering is whether the design review would provide, in staff's opinion, any objective information, you know, Cliff had said this is subjective. So, you know, of course, more information is helpful, but how are we to ensure that there's an objective way to look at whether the architectural integrity of the building is preserved? And I'm wondering if this type of study has been done in the past?
Well, I think that two elements, one is certainly the idea of subjective or objective. I think what we're trying to get at is a third-party opinion by someone who's not materially involved in the project. For example, the proponent of the project, they're going to have, they have their own architecture firm involved and their opinion about that. You know, staff does not, we do not have any architects on staff, so the idea of, you know, being in position to put that discussion on a more level playing field, I guess you'd say, would be part of the objective point of that. Same with alternative design solutions in terms of what might be considered suitable by a layperson, or might be somewhat different than what's considered suitable by a design professional and architect. So the idea of sifting through those sort of sets of facts. We're talking about design issues and the idea of building character and design. You are talking about an issue that is subjective, I mean, that's the bottom line. It's going to be a subjective decision. There's no criteria that says you can't touch a building, you can't modify it. So I mean, that's really what you'd be looking at is an objective third-party opinion as to the implications of the project on the building's design integrity.
Okay, and do we have any information on what kind of modifications to date have been done to the building by any prior owners?
To my knowledge, none have been done to date. Exterior changes.
Exterior. And are these proposed changes only to the exterior? Or are there any changes to the interior as well?
The only items that are subject to design permit review are the exterior changes.
I see. Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Ray, you have any? Sherry?
I think having an architectural review is a good idea. It puts more options on the table and gives us a better, will give us a better feel for what's possible and what's feasible for the site, so I would be in favor of that.
Okay. I have a number of slips here, and I'm assuming folks are property owners. The first one I have is Eric Clapp. Eric, come on up. What's your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Eric Clapp. I'm with Westport Capital Partners. We are the owner of the 5,000 and 7,000 Marina Boulevard properties, which we acquired earlier this year. I just wanted to come up to really share on this subject and an urging of time is of the essence. I don't want anything to look like we are not trying to take care and give as much credit and acknowledgement of the existing buildings. We've been working diligently since the beginning of the year in trying to come up with a plan, and I really just want to echo and confirm that, you know, it's imperative for us to be able to show to the marketplace sooner than later in our mind an improved building which would be acceptable to tenants. I'm here to answer any questions you guys have as well too, if you do have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Clapp?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, second slip I have is for Simon Clark.
Good evening, I'm Simon Clark. I'm a leasing broker with CBRE in Peninsula. I'm a specialist in Sierra Point and North County. And I just want to back up Eric's point of view that time is of the essence for us. We have a market that's extremely weak, among markets that are extremely strong. And my job, my task is to obviously help Westport Capital Partners succeed in their project, but also to help you guys succeed in creating an anchor tenant for Brisbane to fill the vacancy and the large void in that market. And timing is of great essence to us. Brisbane is historically a market which is last in and first out because of its challenges with accessibility. So timing for us is very, very important. In our economic cycle in the real estate world, we're more than 12 months into the cycle, which is typically a 12-month upswing. So we're facing the challenge today of really beating the clock. And it's very important that whatever decision is made is made quickly so that Westport can get on, do what they need to do to prepare the building in a market-ready fashion so that we can attract a stunning company like the Walmarts that we had before to come out of San Francisco and to create a home in Brisbane, California. So I really, I'm just here to urge you and to please make your decision as quickly as possible so that we can create the end result, which is a large company that's got a home in Brisbane and can put Brisbane back on the map, and it sorely needs it. It's 40 percent vacant in Sierra Point, whereas, for example, San Bruno is 4 percent vacant. It's, we have to get over these challenges and we need to all work together in partnership. So thank you very much for your time, and if any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Okay. Thank you, Simon. Next slip I have is Alex Wilson.
Good evening, I'm Alex Wilson, I'm also with CBRE. I've got really nothing more to add to Simon, I will let my colleagues speak.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Last slip I have is, tell me if I butcher your name here, is Mark Geisreiter?
Very close.
Is that correct?
I'm Mark Geisreiter.
Geisreiter, okay.
I've heard way worse, thank you.
Okay.
So my name is Mark Geisreiter, I've been in the real estate business in the Bay Area for about the last 30 years. And like Eric and Simon and Alex, I also wanted to share a goal for the council to move quickly. We've all heard that real estate is a location, location, location. Those are the three most important things in our business. Timing in the Bay Area is one. I want to share a couple statistics with you. This recovery that started about three or four years ago, where is now, we're in our 17th consecutive quarter where around the Bay Area, the vacancy rates have dropped on a quarterly basis. After the 2001 dot-com implosion, that recovery only lasted about 15 quarters. We've been tracking the real estate markets throughout the last 50 or 60 years. The average recovery lasts about 12 or 13 quarters. So we're already well into a very good cycle. We're not sure how much longer the cycle is going to last. And what happens in the Bay Area when things go, they go quickly. Remember what it was like in 2001, where you couldn't find a tenant to find space like this anywhere in the Bay Area. So we're in a very, very much a boom and bust market, worth the tail end of a very, very positive market, which could end anytime, the minute the VCs start spinning. I think the entire Bay Area starts feeling that. So we hope you keep that in mind. The other thing I think you should keep in mind to hope speed decisions is, this is a competitive market. Currently, in San Francisco, which is hopefully where a tenant's going to come from, there are about 5.5 million square feet of buildings that are either under construction or that have just been completed. So five and a half million feet of new space in front of the city planning department, your colleagues up in San Francisco right now, there's another 2 million square feet in front of the planning commission. And back of that, in pre-approval right now, is 7 million square feet of new projects under construction. There's a window right now with a lack of large buildings in the Bay Area available that makes 5,000 and 7,000 very, very appealing, but there is a huge backlog of new construction that's going to come on, that's going to compete with this project. That's only in San Francisco. There's projects in Oakland, there's projects in San Mateo, there's projects in Silicon Valley that are all going to compete here. So we urge you to act quickly to allow these decisions to get made so that Eric and his team get the right marketing materials to go attract the right tenant and bring some really terrific jobs to Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I have a question for staff.
I did have one further question. Can I come back to one further question for staff? So do we know what the leasing history is of these two buildings? How long they've stayed vacant and what they've been, what companies have occupied them aside from Walmart in the past? And if staff can't answer it, perhaps someone else can?
Well, I mean, it was originally built for a toy company, and I think some of your colleagues on the city council are very familiar with the original building tenant, and it was an owner-built kind of project. I'm unfamiliar with its leasing history subsequent to that point to Walmart, and then since Walmart left, it's been vacant. So that's, I think, going on three to four years of vacancy.
Mr. Mayor, Simon, one of the brokers.
You want to make another point?
I can add to that, I have a greater knowledge. Obviously, the building was built for our Dakin, they were there, followed by the good guys. They invested in 2001, and Walmart entered that building, and then committed to take the 5,000 building after it was leased. They signed a lease and moved to San Bruno. They signed a lease in 2010, they moved in 2011. The building was placed on the market by Schorenstein in 2010, and it has laid vacant since that time. I leased the 1,000 Marina building, I've done that for the last nine and a half, twice to 10 years. So I've seen what's happened next door, day to day in my life for 10 years, and obviously, very importantly, the last four years, since the recession really kicked in and those buildings suffered. And they've been vacant because they have become beyond the economic usefulness of a modern company today, which is why Westport Capital Partners are asking to create some updates for the millennial generation. So it's been vacant for four years, and price that has been fully occupied.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. John, in the staff report, you said if we move forward with a peer review, it'd be 45 to 60 days?
That's an estimate, yes.
Okay. So, either or. Either we move forward with it or don't, and put it on next agenda, so, Ray, go ahead.
Well, personally, I'm strongly in favor, not surprisingly, of moving to get an architectural consultant to give us some different perspectives and different information and different analysis. Personally, and other people I've spoken with, do not believe that particular proposal that's in mine is necessary in two respects. One, it destroys the award-winning integrity, architectural integrity of the building, and it's really highly questionable whether or not it really increases marketability. That's a matter of opinion and speculation. So I think in order for us to make a balanced, sensible, you know, long-term decision on the most important historical building in Brisbane, we need some additional professional advice to help us do that. Now, I certainly agree that we should move that along as expeditiously as possible, and I have no wish to pull things up other than to get the kind of alternative information, alternative perspectives, alternative renovations that we can look at. And hopefully, if there's some willingness on the part of owner and architect to work in that process, then maybe we can even do it collaboratively, and that would even speed things up further. But I really think that the council deserves to have full and complete information before it makes this really crucial decision on the most important building in Brisbane.
You know, I have a question for you, Ray. So, I read your letter, and it was, you know, very well-written, and you could tell you have a lot of passion for the architectural integrity of the building. If we moved forward and had an expert opinion, and that opinion was fairly much in line with what the property owners are presenting, and the opinion of the expert, you know, was fairly much what the property owners were saying why they need to make these changes, would then that change your mind and say, okay, I've gotten this third-party perspective, it's in line with the property owners, and so I'm fine with then moving forward with the project?
So, trying to respond, good question.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, you know, yeah.
To me, I think we should do the most we can to respect the architectural integrity of this award-winning building. And, you know, this is an opportunity to protect our heritage. If it turns out, after speaking with, you know, various other sources who are not, you know, deeply involved in something that's already been put together, obviously, they have a commitment to it. But somebody who isn't that committed, who can look at the issues, and there are a number of ones which have been spelled out, which I don't think it's appropriate to talk about tonight, but they've been identified as to, you know, what the issues are and what the needs are and what the objectives are. That's all explicitly stated. And so the architectural consultant knows what to study, and knows what we're, what I hope we'd be getting information on. If they come back and say, you know, jeez, it doesn't look as if it's really feasible, I'm certainly open to looking at that. You know, I'm not fixed in mud on anything, it's not my particular personality, you know that. But I think we ought to give the building a chance.
All right, all right. You know, when I went out there today, you know, I wanted to get, you know, that same opportunity that you and council member O'Connell had, you know, to look at the site and determine whether or not I needed that additional information. Personally, I feel like I don't, but, yeah, in regards to gathering information and, you know, having all the tools at our disposal, you know, it makes it difficult to not support that. And so I don't know if my mind would change even if the perspective of the experts said, yeah, the integrity of the building should stay. You know, I can only go so far in describing it, but I would, I'd be in favor of moving forward with hiring someone for the $7,500, as long as we can, you know, have it before the council in November, you know, at the latest, and that, you know, that we deal with in a fairly speedy manner.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I would move that we approve the retaining of an architectural consultant in this matter, not to exceed $7,500.
Laurie, I want to hear from you before we put that on the floor.
Sure, thank you. So, since I haven't actually seen the inside of the building, I did go by it today and look at the outside, but, you know, without seeing the inside, it's hard for me to say whether or not additional information would help, but I, I supre, I, I would suspect that it would. But, you know, my thinking is, when you're looking at the entire, architectural integrity of the building, you know, I, I would hope that, that a consultant would, would not think, well, this is what it was just designed to do, you know, for this original use, therefore it has to stay, just because of that reason. You know, there's, the purpose of the building is to be occupied and to house a business, and, you know, from what I've read, the business that was, that it was originally built for had it, you know, specific reasons for designing it that way, because they didn't want the sunlight to, to hit its products.
That's a speculative comment. I don't think there's evidence to support that, but...
Okay, so I, you know, I haven't read...
It was in the report.
Right, so, so...
Speculation.
What I would like is for any review to not just consider, you know, what it was used for at the time it was built, but, you know, balancing the needs of, you know, the current economy and what sort of business it could be used for, because I want it to be a viable space. You know, it'd be, it would be nice to have it preserved, you know, in its architectural integrity, you know, if it could be used, but I, I would, you know, hate to see it go, to remain vacant, and just, just for the purpose of, you know, keeping its architectural integrity. So, I, you know, I appreciate that, you know, it is time-sensitive, so I, I would like to, I, I would be in favor of, of the additional review by the architectural consultant, but I would like to, you know, I, I'm cognizant that it needs to be expedited.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit torn. I mean, you know, I went out and looked at the building myself, I guess, I think Thursday. Just, you know, try, I'm familiar with the building itself, and, you know, I know it's a 20-plus-year-old building, and I agree with what you say, that it's meant to be filled, and it's been vacant a long time, and, and that concerns me, and I, and I heard you folks, that time is of the essence, so I'm, you know, I'm torn here, because I want to make informed decisions and things like that, but by the same token, I think I heard that what you folks want is a decision, whether it's yea or nay, so you can move on. I know you'd rather hear it yea, but I understand, you know, that things need to move fast sometimes, you know, and so I'm a bit torn, you know, with this one. Because that is an area that we really want to bring up. We know we want to put corporate-type, headquarter-type business, which would support other things. We had a hotel feasibility study done a couple of years ago. It says, you're gonna do it, these are the type of businesses that you need to go out there, and I know these folks just bought this and want to kind of bring some type of business there. I'm not sure what, but hopefully staff leads them to our hotel feasibility studies. So with this one, I, you know, it's another one of those subjective things, you know, that you look at, well, if you're taking this out, what are you putting in? And to me, I would look at the energy efficiency of the building. Does it take away, or does it add, you know? I don't know if I can talk about that right now.
Yeah, no, that's what makes it difficult, right? You can't, you can't talk about, I mean, I would love to be able to, like, talk about it, but we're limited to, to this, and, you know, you want to spend...
Really comes down to, and I'm hearing the four people want to move forward with it.
Can I make one comment, please?
Let me finish, and then...
Oh, sure.
So I've heard four folks say that, yeah, I'm willing to move forward and would do it just so long as it was expeditiously, expeditiously done, and so, John, the question is, what does that mean to you?
Well, again, not having contracted for this particular service, I was assuming the RFP, if, if we're authorized, would go out tomorrow to a select number of architectural firms. I would think it would take somebody a week to 10 days to respond, and, you know, a very short process of calling the, the proposals, trying to get a contract let, you know, in a matter of two to three weeks from this evening, and then that gets us two to, you know, two to three weeks to do the work and turn around, turned around a work product. So that's really kind of what I'm talking about, in terms of when I estimate it. If it can be done sooner, and I get four proposals by Friday, and everything can be expedited, that's wonderful. I just, you know, can't guarantee with business, and I know, you know, the, the development business is fairly active right now, you know, I wanted to make sure I give people enough time to respond and get back, so there's no point of sending on RFP with such a short deadline that nobody responds, so, and trying to balance, making sure we get a reasonable selection of firms, along with timeliness. But certainly, we understand, and staff understands, the timeliness issue and the idea of getting this back to the council if you so choose, you know, as soon as we possibly can do that, but I don't control, you know, the consultant's response, or, or even a schedule from them. Although I will give them a deadline. I think the way the RFP will go out is a 30-day deadline from the contract being let to delivering a, a work product, a deliverable. So that's the parameters I've set to date.
What about this, Clark, if we had, oh, okay, okay.
Terry was next.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I don't want to take away from that.
So, my thoughts are that if we don't have an architectural review, when this item comes to appeal, for the appeal to be heard before the council, we're going to have more speculation, more what-ifs, more how can this process be the best, and are the concerns being addressed? And this, that may draw out the appeal process and the review process even more. I think if we have the guidance of a firm that can come in and give us a secondary opinion, that could help us make the best decision. So I don't see having a peer review really as slowing it down. I think it really could help us speed it up in the long run.
So, would I like, what's our, what are the dates in November for council meetings?
The 20th and the 6th.
Okay. So, you know, one of the things that John brought up, you know, I think is very important, is that we, you know, he could put it out there, and if $7,500 is the amount, things are so busy right now, we might not get anybody saying, I don't want to put in the time and get $7,500. That, that isn't worth it for me. And then we can keep waiting for some, I think, if we're gonna have, if we're gonna go down this route and, and get some, a second opinion, but we also want to have it done in, in, in an expeditious manner, we should say that we'll have the appeal before the council on our November 20th meeting. And if we can get that information prior to, then let's do it, and if we can't, then let's just do it ourselves. Personally, I, I think we can do it ourselves. I'm, I'm agreeing to, to, to go get the extra information, and, you know, out of respect for the, the folks who are appealing, and, and they've, they've put forth, you know, a reason, you know, for it. It hasn't won me over, but I'm doing it out of, out of respect. But I, I think we also need to, to work on this soon. And so, I like to put that out there, that, that we at least hear this on our November 20th meeting.
Well, maybe we should put a time limit on the, the response, because if we don't get a response...
Again, through the, through the mayor, the, the proposal, if it goes out tomorrow, would likely have a deadline of a week from Friday for response. I mean, that would be what I would put out under, under the proposal, so. I would know by a week from Friday if there's zero interest, and we had no responses. Obviously, I'll know by a week from Friday. I wasn't planning on leaving it open until such time as, as, you know, somebody got around to, to doing it. I've also had preliminary contact with a couple of firms, and, and there's no commitment, obviously, no one's seen a scope of work, but, you know, that at least expressed interest in looking at it, so I'm confident that I'll have somebody look at it, and hopefully, you know, the numbers and the schedule will work out. That's my biggest concern, that if someone's schedule doesn't allow for it, that might be an issue, but, you know, I do have some confidence that we'll get a, you know, some response rate to a proposal we put out.
I think that's reasonable, then. If I think your reasoning is, is, is good reasoning, you know, do it out of respect for folks that did the appeal, but if we don't receive a response, then we should put it on the next agenda right after that.
Okay.
And that, that, you include that in your motion, then? Or do we need to?
Yeah, I don't know that you necessarily do. I was just gonna say that the, the comments that Councilwoman O'Connell made were really kind of on point to what staff was thinking, was that it was likely to come out of your hearing that you would request this kind of technical review and technical expertise, so our bringing this forward to you tonight was, was an effort to try to move the process along expeditiously.
Okay. All right. I know to the applicants, that's probably not what you want to hear, but I think you understand probably the direction that we're taking, so we'll try and do it as, as quick as possible, and I know it's a time-sensitive matter for you folks, so.
And could I add, then, what I, what I had mentioned before, and, you know, maybe we can slightly revise the draft scope of work, to, to include that it, you know, the architectural review should look at the proposed design modifications to also weigh the usability of the space, to, you know, to, to look at their modifications, looking at, you know, architectural integrity and how that interacts with and can perhaps achieve the economic use of the building. I don't know if that is something an architect would do, but, you know, it's, it's not a museum, you know, it's, I, I want to make sure that the study also would look at the usability of the space.
I believe under item two already, we talked about evaluating alternative, alternative design solutions that address the applicant's functional objectives. There's already...
It's already there.
They've articulated that.
Okay.
You know, we'll make sure that whatever firm understands their objectives in terms of the interior modification of the space, so that would be weighed in or factored into the whole evaluation of alternatives, based on the scope as we anticipated.
Okay. So, Jesus, Ray made a motion, we don't have a second.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
And before the hearing, after the report comes in, could we schedule a publicly-noticed site visit? Okay, field trip, thank you.
Yeah, I, I happen to think that I agree with Laurie, that that would be a good idea.
All right, under our new business, item B, which is consider authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Anchor Q E A LLC in the amount of $170,200 to perform design and permitting services for a marina dredging project.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good evening. Yes, sir.
Before we move on, is it, did you, gentlemen have any, any questions on that? You look like you're...
Okay, I, I understand. My name's Eric Clapp with Westport Capital Partners. I, I just wanted to respond and say, we appreciate and understand what, what you're asking for. We'd like to do whatever we can to work with staff and work with the consultant to make sure that they understand and appreciate what we were thinking about, what we were evaluating, how we were looking at it, to hopefully continue to expedite, as Councilmember Miller recommended. And if anything, I think we're comfortable with having people over the site. I, I prefer to almost have it beforehand, so as soon as the report's done, we can really come to the next scheduled meeting. But I, I appreciate this, and I want to make sure, and I do appreciate that a lot of what you were looking to do wasn't an attempt to be able to come to a decision faster for us as well, and so we look forward to working with you on this.
All right, thank you, Eric. Anybody else? Okay. All right, sorry about that. Let's move on to item B, which is consider authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Anchor Q E A LLC in the amount of $170,200 to perform design and permitting services for the marina dredging project. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good evening. Very nice to see all of you back together on the dais, hand ready and rested as we move into the last four months of 2014. Before I give a very brief staff report on this, there's some people in the audience I'd like to introduce to you. The first is Mr. Michael Hahn. Mike is your new harbor master, and Mike comes to us with 28 years of experience in the city of San Jose. He retired from the police department there as a lieutenant, and perhaps more importantly, as he's the proud owner of a 41-foot wooden sailboat that's moored in our marina. And I can assure you that a primary part of his evaluation was my personal inspection of the seaworthiness and condition of that vessel, to make sure he was somebody I thought who ought to be a harbor master for the Brisbane Marina. This is the end of Mike's first week here, and I believe that he's worked seven out of seven of the last days, based on a lot of the activities that we've had going on down here. I hope that settles down. I think, as many of you know, Mike, is the third harbor master we've had down there in the two years, and I'm really hoping to keep him beyond my retirement, so welcome to Michael.
Yeah, welcome to Brisbane, Michael.
Welcome, Michael. Do you want to say anything? You're, you're all talked out, huh?
We also... We also have two representatives from the firm, Anchor Q E A, Mr., actually, Dr. Josh Burnham is here, and also seated to his left is Ms. Katie Chamberlain, so if we have technical questions for the consultant here this evening. As four to five of the council members know, this is an item that's been brought to your attention a couple of years ago. We started having a number of incidents. We had a number of boaters down at the marina who were experiencing shallow water that was preventing their departure, their coming and going at any time they chose, and we then went ahead and completed a bathymetric survey. We determined that was, in fact, the case. We were able to determine where the low points are, and based on that, we went out and we were, had brought Anchor Q E A, or attempted to bring them on, almost a year ago, and it just didn't work out. We were just not going to have enough time to go through the difficult permitting process. You have, there's three different agencies that we have to go through. We have to go through the Amory Corps of Engineers, we have to go through BCDC, and we have to go through the regional board and their 401 permitting process. So we didn't have time to get into this summer's dredging season. The reason we're bringing this for you, forward to you this evening, is that we believe that the permitting process needs to start now, so that we can put out a contract in a timely fashion, so that we can hit the June 2015 dredging season at the start. As I mentioned in my staff report, we anticipate that it could take two seasons, and I expect it will take two seasons. The, the plan that we've originally envisioned is that we'll do the approach to the marina first, docks one and perhaps dock two, and then have to come back in 2016 and do the rest of it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council questions? Anybody?
We all have questions.
Well, nobody's jumping on it. Go ahead, Ray.
Okay. I mean, overall, it looks fine, but I just have a couple of things that I don't understand, and so, since we have the experts here and, you know, and the bosses here, so, between all of you, I'm sure you can answer my questions. I was looking at, I'm looking at the Anchor Q E A statement of work, and right on the first page, it talks about, you know, how deep you want to dredge, and then there's something called "two feet of allowable overdepth."
Right.
Would you explain that concept?
Actually, I'll take a shot at it, and we'll, we'll see how badly the consultants cringe when I explain to it. So, one of the challenges with dredging a marina is that you are working, in this case, we anticipate it'll be worked on in a barge with a clamshell-type device, is that you're working on a moving vessel in murky water, and you're trying to reach down, could be anywhere from six to 10 to 12 feet below you, depending upon the tides, and establish a specified datum. You're trying to reach this certain point, and as you're doing it, you're reaching down with this giant clamshell that takes these... you're doing it, you're reaching down with this giant clamshell that takes these Pac-Man type bites out of the sediment. So, what typically happens, the way the specifications are written to allow for some deviation in what is obviously going to be in the contractor's means and methods, he's not going to be able to get to this very precise type of elevation that you can on land, typically allow the contractor one foot of paid over dredge and two feet maximum. So, what that does is the one foot gives us the leeway to work with the contractor, so we don't make such an unreasonable requirement for him, that he's going to put in the one foot over anyway and make his bid really high. And the two foot over allows us to stay within the compliance permits that we're going to have from the dredging and material management office. How'd I do, Josh? Okay? Thank you. I actually read the Army Corps of Engineers manual they sent to me many years ago, so I try and get familiar with it.
Verbatim?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's very helpful. On the second page, under assumptions for task number two, there's a whole bunch of bullets, one, two, three, four, five, six down. The dredge operations plan for the 2014 dredging episode will be completed by the contractor. What's the dredging episode?
Over to you, Josh. Do you want to go up and take the microphone, please? Thanks.
Just give your name for the record, please.
Hi. Dr. Joshua Burnham, representing the firm, Anchor Q E A. The answer to your question, council member, is that episode is fancy agency parlance for the job. That's how the DMO refers to the job, the act of the dredger, going out there and doing the work. They refer to it as an episode approval. It's an agency parlance.
Talk about that agency. Where are they located, and how much authority do they have and so forth?
Well, it's actually multiple agencies. There's several, multiple agencies that regulate dredging, and they have a significant amount of authority, which is to say that we can't do the work without all of their approval. We're fortunate that in San Francisco Bay, we have an entity called the Dredge Material Management Office, which is a, came together many years ago as a way to consolidate the reviews for dredging, to help projects move quickly. And having worked in many different parts of the country, and formerly for the Corps of Engineers myself, this is probably one of the best functioning of such agencies. So, we're very fortunate, or we would have otherwise probably had to start even longer ago. But, the primary agencies you're dealing with are the BCDC, the Corps of Engineers, the Regional Board, and US EPA also has a review function. And then there's consulting agencies, US Fish and Wildlife Service, National Marine Fisheries Service, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and so on, California State Lands. And they all come together under the jurisdiction, if you will, of the DMO. We're able to, in this region, to submit one consolidated package of information to the DMO, which is very helpful.
That's great.
But, all of those agencies have to review and approve the project. But, they're fortunate, we're fortunate they meet on a regular basis and do it according to a fair, I mean, it's, there's guidelines and rules of thumb and expertise to get through different types of projects. But, we ultimately, the city would receive permits from pretty much all of the agencies I just mentioned. BCDC, the Corps Water Board, would issue permits. The other agencies would review and consult and signal their concurrence with the findings. US EPA would signal their concurrence with the findings. So, it all goes through the DMO process, but we can't put a dredge in the water without everybody's permission.
Yeah, I vaguely recall, you know, the last time we did this, that there were at least 18 approvals, I would necessarily say.
Yeah, it's probably, it's streamlined pretty well. Things move pretty efficiently. We do this routinely. So, you're, it's really nice that it's one, one package of information that gets, you know, discussed with all the agencies together. So, it works fairly well.
It's actually rational.
It is, actually.
On page five, it's a SAR. I assume that's the sampling and analysis report.
Correct.
But, it says, "will be prepared in accordance with the ITM PN110TM." What's that?
Inland Testing Manual. It's the, one of the set of regulations that discuss the information that the agencies need to understand, the, what's, kind of the biggest part of the process is the characterization of the dredge material, so we can present our strategy for disposing of the material, ideally in bay. The city would qualify as what's called a small dredger, so we can try to take advantage of the in-bay disposal site. But, to do that, we have to run a series of tests, chemical and biological. The ITM or the inland testing manual is the Army Corps of Engineers and EPA guidance for how to do those tests. It's sort of a cookbook for the test, if you will. So, basically, when you go to the DMO, you present them a sampling analysis plan that says, "here's everything I'm going to do to receive your approval." They sign off on that in a meeting. Then, we conduct the testing, and we are in communication with them throughout the testing, making sure that we want to continue down the pathways of various tests, to make sure that we very efficiently spend the city's money and don't do any tests that we don't need to do. And then, at the end, we have to prepare a report called the Sampling Analysis Report that consolidates the results. We hand it back to these same agencies and ask for a permit.
So, how many things do you need the test for?
It's a long list.
That's what I assumed.
Yeah, it's, off the top, I wouldn't be able to go through the list off the top of my head without the manual in front of me, but it's a lot of chemicals, compounds, biological testing. It's a fairly significant list, and it makes up a bulk of the cost. The labs, labs do the lion's share of the work.
Lab analysis that really, yeah.
The lab analysis is the lion's share of the work, of the cost of the fee, yes. It's mandatory testing.
Right. Okay. Got it. You just mentioned putting the material in places in the bay. But, I remember when we were looking at this once before, there was some talk about, presuming that most of the tests came out okay, that there was some value to the using this for, you know, capping landfills and so forth.
Upland, wetlands.
Yeah, right. And there were some talk about actually taking it out and storing it even in the quarry, I think, because, you know, it has valuable material that could be used for other purposes, and it would, you know, be a multiple-functional thing. And so, has that been considered, or is that relevant, or what do you think about that?
We didn't factor it into this scope of work. I mean, generally, the most efficient thing to do is to handle the material as few times as possible from a construction cost perspective. And to be frank, usually, when you start taking material out of the water and having to de-water it and put it on a truck, it drives the cost up fairly significantly, very significantly, as compared to the efficiency of using the marine barge equipment. I mean, dredging is very much an economy of scale situation. But, I mean, there have been situations, we've worked with other cities, for example, where, you know, you may have access to some amount of your own equipment or may not need to, you know, to bid certain things. And certainly, there's cases, we would call that sort of beneficial reuse, you know, if the city has other needs for the material, you know, as we're examining the material, we can examine the possibility of those uses and work with your engineering and public work staff and decide if we want to use it that way.
Or, you know, some developer, let's say, who wants to use it for some purpose, you know, they might be willing to pay for that extra cost, if that's the material they want it.
They may. It's not that...
Does that ever happen?
It does. It's not as simple as it sounds, because generally, there's other restrictions and regulations that come into play. If you start placing marine material in the upland area, you could get into some concerns about salt and groundwater and other things. So, it's, it opens up another line of investigation and design questions, but that's not at all to say that it's impossible. It would be something that we would just need to evaluate. I think, once we started to get a sense of what was in the dredge material, you know, my recommendation would be to do the DMO-required testing, so we don't do too much. And then, when we get the results and we see what we're dealing with, if we feel like there's somebody out there who wants to, at their cost, come and get some of the material, we could think about how to fold that into the design. But, you know, we would just want to be cautious about not increasing the city's costs in any way to start double handling the material.
Right. I agree with that. Yeah. Good, good answer. Just one other question. I noticed that the deliverables will be in electronic format only. And I guess the only question that that popped into my mind was, what kind of backup do we have?
How many would you like? Are you talking about like our servers, or how many copies we give to you, or?
Well, electronic stuff can disappear, and so, particularly if it's not properly backed up. And so, I guess I just was wondering what kind of process you have to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Well, we, I mean, at our firm, we have multiple server backups and redundant backups, so we don't usually have any issues like that. But, you know, certainly, if the city prefers, we're more than happy to deliver hard copies as well. Just these days, most folks just prefer electronic filing to reduce paperwork, but we're more than happy to provide hard copies of everything. Certainly, the DMO requests some hard copies as well, so there's no way to avoid producing a certain amount of them, hard copies. We just try to reduce our paper.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just worried about, you know, all of a sudden, somebody forgot to back it up, and it's only electronic, and it's gone.
And, you know, we'll deliver you certainly all your own copies of everything, the survey data. We'll make sure that you have copies of everything as well.
Okay. That's great. That's good. Thank you.
Great.
Laurie?
Thank you. So, I did take a look at your website to see what other projects you've done around the Bay Area, and it sounds like you've got quite a bit of experience in sediment removal.
Yeah.
So, what happens if, after the testing is done, it turns out there's something in it that means they can't go for disposal in the bay, and where else would it go?
Well, there's a range of options. I mean, kind of as I mentioned before, there's a classification in the bay called small dredger, which the city meets, which is a function of frequency of dredging and volume, size, use. Just to kind of give you the converse, like a commercial shipyard is not a small dredger. So, you're kind of, so you have the benefit, as a small dredger, you have the benefit of attempting to take your material to the in-bay disposal site, which is kind of the site that everybody wants to use, because it's the least-cost site. There's multiple in-bay disposal sites. But, our testing also does include, you know, some of the, you know, provisos for, I think we mentioned ocean disposal. As you move through the testing, as the results come in, the way we handle it, and the best way to handle is, it's sort of, it's not really a situation where you go to the DMO, and then you do it, and then you go off and do the testing, and you come back and sort of show everything. It's sort of an iterative process. And as the tests are coming in, we're constantly evaluating what direction it looks like material is going. If it looks like we start to fall off the table for in-bay, and it may just be for part of the marina, because we're sampling at multiple locations, the next likely option is the ocean disposal site, San Francisco Deep Ocean Disposal, which is offshore, which has a wider window of material that it can accept. That's, it's more expensive. But, so in your case, it's not preferable, because you don't need to use it. But, in the case of like a large commercial operation, they have to. Then, of course, there's also beneficial reuse, which is encouraged. And if you were not a small dredger, you would also be expected to look into beneficial reuse of some of your dredge material at some of the wetland sites like Monizuma. So, as a small, as a small dredger, from an economic perspective, you have the opportunity to try to take all of your material to the in-bay site, you know, subject to the annual limitations that the agencies have. But, if the material has some issues, maybe something happened that we're not aware of, then we'll have to start looking into these other options, and we may end up parsing out the material to different disposal locations. So, there's a series of, I don't want to call them necessarily fallback options, because wetland beneficial reuse is not, is certainly in and of itself a very good thing, but it is more expensive. Hauling the material to Monizuma is going to be significantly more expensive than taking the material to the in-bay disposal site. But, we're prepared to go through those, and you're, we're working with the DMO as it comes up. And if it, you know, if something was really wrong, you know, when we first pulled the test, if something was really high, screaming high levels of something, maybe something spilled in the middle of the night, and nobody knew about it, we would know right away and be able to come back and say, "hey, look, we got a problem in this corner of the marina. We got to come up with something else, you know, for this." And then, maybe that's where we start looking for landfill cover or developer pad fill and things like that. That's where I think some of the options that Councilman Miller was talking about might start to become things we want to look at, is if we have material that we don't want to pay a lot of material to dispose, you know, then we start looking towards landfill and capping and things of that nature. And we have a lot of experience with all of those options.
Okay. And when the dredging actually does take place, how are the boats rearranged out there so that the, they can still be, the marina's still usable during the dredging process?
No, I mean, to be frank with you, it's going to be, it's going to impose some restrictions on the use of the marina. And unfortunately, the dredging window, which is primarily a semaned protection window, June and November, of course, is right over the summer. And that's, changing that is not great, not a great way to start the permit process. Our experience, and we've dredged in multiple marinas and for multiple yacht clubs, unfortunately, as I said before, dredging is economy of scale. And like any construction job, you don't really want to restrict the contractor any more than you have to. So, usually, it is better to take the boats out and either move them or kind of do it in phases. We've generally had success working with harbor master. It's going to be critical to work with your new harbor master to come up kind of a phasing plan and have some meetings with the marina tenants and the yacht club and say, "look, we anticipate that from X to X, the boats on these docks are going to need to move." And then, they're going to move, and you kind of do it as a, kind of a game of Tetris as you go, for lack of a better way to describe it. But, the straight answer to your question is, yeah, we're going to need to move some boats. It's better for the dredger. It's better for the city's costs. It's better for liability, and it's better for the boat operators, because the dredging's a little messy, and you really don't want that size of equipment operating next to people's private property, if you can avoid it. And we've done this up and down the coast, and you just have to work with the city and the police department and do what you need to do to, you know, move the boats and protect people's property. But, it's heavy construction. It's big equipment.
Thank you. That's it.
Yeah. See, on page four, the second last paragraph, and you talk about, you know, things that you might find, like PCBs, NPH, PAHs. How likely is that? I mean, because we do have some records from the previous dredging.
I mean, generally speaking, with the sensitivity of testing, you generally always find a little bit of something. But, it's, that's a common question, and it's really hard, hard to answer, because there are no, there are no bright lines necessarily. There's no, if you find X of Y, you're finished. That's where the bioassay and kind of the biological, the toxicity testing comes in. I mean, generally, the best way to sort of, you know, the cliche, you know, past performance is no judge of future success. But, you know, when you sort of, you try to form a judgment-based picture of, you look at, where did the dredge material go in the past? It sounds like it went in bay. You look at the uses of the marina. It's recreational. There's no heavy industry there. And so, you factor in, you know, how long has it been since you dredged last time? I think, close to 15 years. So, the shoaling rate doesn't seem extreme. So, you factor those things in. And our best professional judgment at this point is, more than likely, your material, unless something has happened that nobody is aware of, or there's been an aberration or an extreme event or a chemical spill, or something that we haven't anticipated, our expectation is that the material's going to fall more, you know, most likely in the in-bay window with the possibility of some going to, you know, as the fallback being the San Francisco Deep Ocean. But, there's really no way to say for sure what we're going to find until we get out there. But, you know, our expectation, based on the prior dredging and the current use of the marina, is that it's, it seems unlikely. But, that's, you know, speculation until we do the testing.
Sure. I mean, you look at the costs, and you mentioned it tonight, that so much of the costs are in the sampling.
Right, exactly.
And then, you have this long list of sampling. You know, many of these things might not ever be detected, right? But, you have to do it, because, you know, and then, of course, you...
Like I was mentioning before, I mean, it's, the way we do it, it's, what we've indicated is sort of the reasonable worst-case cost, if we had to go through all the testing. But, we're constantly monitoring the results of the test and talking to the DMO. And if we get to a point where the results are clearly and unambiguously in one direction, then we'll discontinue.
Okay. So, we could reduce some of these costs, then?
We always try. We always try to, yeah.
Cliff, can I piggyback on something you hit on?
Yeah, yeah.
That way, I don't have to come back to it, because we did dredge about 15 years ago. So, we do have data, right? Are you going to compare that?
Sure, yes. Yeah, the information from the past dredging is always something that we provide to the agencies.
Okay, good. All right.
Yeah, we'll definitely need that.
Okay.
But, just to finish my prior comment for you, Councilmember Lentz, so it's a time and material scope, and our approach is to only go as far in the testing as we need to, until we have a clear, you know, clear and absolute answer. And if it comes up spotless and clean, DMO says, "we're going to concur with this finding." If there's an opportunity to shut off or discontinue some of the more expensive tests, like the biological tests, we'll either stop them, or in some cases, if the results come in fast enough, we won't even start them. So, it's a, it's an iterative process, and the fee that's represented there is sort of the, if we have to do everything, cost. But, the goal is, and the hope is that we won't necessarily have to do everything. But, we don't know until we start, start the tests.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, and just reading the proposal, I mean, there's, there's some areas where the price could go up, you know, depending upon what you find, and how much needs to be done.
You know, we've based our estimate on the previous bathymetric survey. If there was a huge increase in volume, you know, we might need to take an additional sample. We don't, we can't predispose the DMO's judgment about our sampling plans. There's always some, there's always some negotiation with the DMO involved. But, you know, our, our experience is pretty vast on this stuff, so we're usually pretty close to right over the plate with our expectations. But, you know, we can't, I can't predispose what multiple regulators will say when we, when we get there with the results.
Yeah, you know, you know, in the proposal, it talks about, you know, the volume, and that somehow that is tied to how much you would charge. So, I was just kind of curious to know how, why that was a factor, if you're just sampling and providing, you know, a design for the actual company that will do the dredging.
That's a good question. And the answer to the question is that the Dredge Material Management Office has rules for how many samples you need, depending on given volumes. So, we've based our estimate on the last bathymetric survey, assuming that there hasn't been a substantial change. But, if something happened and the volume had gone up, they may say, "well, you need one additional core." And so, then, we have to pay the may say, well, you need one additional core. And so then we have to pay the lab to do a few additional tests. But actually, for the sampling costs and the time in the field, that's actually tied directly to the volume by the DMMO process.
Okay. And then, yeah, so in the proposal, you're asking for another bathymetric survey to be conducted.
Correct.
The last one was done in 2013. Doesn't seem to be very old. Granted, it's only, it's the smallest thing on, in the budget. But still, why the need for another one?
We actually...
Changed that drastically over a two-year period?
The DMMO generally has a survey age consideration. And we actually consulted with the DMMO as part of putting the scope together. And they indicated that for this volume, they were going to be much more comfortable giving us the approvals we were looking for with an updated survey. So that was actually done in coordination with the regulators who said, yeah, we want to see a new survey.
Okay.
So, and we actually tried to avoid that, putting it off until the bidding cycle. But the DMMO said, no, we'd like to see it now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Terry.
So a couple of questions. Back to the description of an episode. Are we going to take the survey results, and I see that this is for a 10-year period for the dredging? And while we can't get this job done in one season, is it that we will be going for a permit where we could come back in in nine years and take out additional material to keep it in a usable method or a usable condition without having to get a new permit? Would that still be part of this permitting episode?
It varies by agency. The Water Board always issues a episode-specific certification. And you will still have to redo the testing if it's nine years out. The testing information, the sediment characterization stuff, the lab stuff is good for three years. But you won't have to go through a big portion of the permit process with BCDC and the Corps because you'll have a blanket permit, which is certainly part of the effort. But you'll still have to do the testing part of it. That only lasts for three years. And the Water Board always issues a certification each time. So it varies a little bit by agency.
Okay.
But generally, if you can get a ticket permit, you want to. Because if you have to come back for any reason, it saves time and money. And if you're going in with no permit, there's, you know, at this point, there's no downside in asking. You might as well get it and then have it if you need it. Better to have it and not need it as long as you're going through the testing process. Like I mentioned to Councilmember Miller, it's still one application form. So it's more work on the agency side than the consultant and the city side, especially with the benefit of starting a little bit early, like we're trying to do, to make sure we have enough time to have a nice, you know, reasonable competitive bid process.
And as far as the testing goes, I was in industry that collected or produced waste oil and occasionally waste. Antifreeze would get mixed in with that accidentally, creating a hot product. And we always had a level that you could go to that was hot or not hot when it came to recycling that oil. Is that the method that they use for the dredge material, that you take the average of your samples to get your level of contamination so that you can, we could, in theory, segregate that area of sampling that might have a hot component and then so dispose of that separately and not at the whole rate for the hot material?
Right. What you're getting at is sort of what the sampling scheme is, the compositing scheme. And so generally, we will break projects of this size into what we call dredging units, which is exactly what you're getting at. The marina will be subdivided into areas. And then each area will be a composite of a handful of cores. And that'll all be negotiated with the DMMO. So when we run the lab tests, we're running composite, which is the standard way to do it. It approximates the concept of putting dredge material in a barge and how it all gets mixed together. That's the agency accepted way to do it. But we're always holding back a sub-sample of the individual cores just until the tests come back. And if we did see one of the composites was high, usually the first thing you do is pull out the subcores that made up that composite and start running those to try to figure out where the hotspot is. So that's a long way of getting to your question, which is, yes, thought does go into having the ability of not throwing the entire baby out with the bathwater. If you hit one hotspot, you don't want to lose the whole thing, which is sort of part of the upfront investment of planning for a more rigorous sampling scheme. And frankly, it's something that the DMMO, essentially at this point, the DMMO fairly well mandates it, you know, with the kind of requirements I was explaining before, for number of samples per size of project. So we will, you know, if one thing comes back hot, it won't cause us to lose the whole project. We'll be able to go back and start some forensics, if you will, and try to isolate an area and say, okay, maybe 90% of the project goes in bay, but 10% of it has to go the ocean, or 10% has to go somewhere else. We always provide ourselves those options as we go.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, I just have more of a statement and then a question. Because I actually was on the council last time we dredged 15 years ago. And I think Ray, you were on the council when we kind of started the...
That's right.
...process back in 1995. But at that time, we were considering going down 12 feet instead of nine. And I think the cost was exponentially greater. And the volume was that they would have had to take it out to the Farallon Islands, I guess they call it, the deep ocean.
That's the deep ocean site.
Yeah. And that really drives the cost of it up, that extra three feet, also not knowing exactly what was in the material. But can you explain, I think, last time I recall, that the material was dumped around Alcatraz area?
That's the in-bay site I was referring to.
Is that the only site in the bay? Or you mentioned other sites?
There's a few in-bay sites, but that's certainly the one that's closest to this location. So that's the one you'd want to use. That's sort of the primary one.
Is that because of the title action or what?
It's just the agencies have gone through the trouble of finding locations where the material can be placed. And then it will do what the material is, you know, for lack of a better explanation, sort of get the material back into the normal sediment cycle of the bay. And that's one of the locations.
Push it back into the Brisbane Marina?
Oh, it seems to all go to... You guys only dredge every 15 years. You don't have that problem. You guys are on the other end of that, the other end of that spectrum. Yeah, you guys are very fortunate. 15 years is a good, long time for a marina.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's very positive for you guys.
Oh, that's good. Okay. Well, I don't have any other questions. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody from the audience have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, good. All right, council's pleasure on this.
I move, I move to make an approval to authorize the professional service agreement with Anchor QEA in the amount of $170,200 for dredging project.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you very much. Okay, item C, which is consider authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for city attorney services with Rennie Sloan-Holzman Secai LLP. David, I think this one's you, right? Are you going to give it to Clay?
Clay, yeah.
Oh, man, yeah. I wanted to put you on the hot seat before he left.
Up with the wolves.
At least those wolves are cuddly and nice. Anyway, before you tonight is authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Rennie Sloan for city attorney services. As you know, the city first approved an agreement with Rennie Sloan back on June of the 17th of last year. At that time, David Kahn became our city attorney. And David has announced that he is going to be leaving the area. He and his wife are moving back east. Our proposal is to maintain our relationship with the firm, but to now have Michael Roush be the lead attorney from Rennie Sloan to be the actual city attorney. Teresa Stricker, who has been acting as our deputy city attorney, will continue on in that role. And this agreement would be in place from September 12th of this year forward. And I believe Michael is here today. So he could, if he wanted to make any comments, I guess this would probably be the appropriate time.
Okay. First of all, I guess, council, everything in here is kosher with you?
You and I do have a question, just to get clarification. So in the process of you leaving, David and Michael coming on board, of course, there's a lot of getting up to speed. So could you explain, you know, what the costs are to the city, if any, for that to happen?
Thank you, Matt. Councilmember Lentz, first, let me thank the council and the city for the opportunity to work with you as your city attorney. It's been a real privilege and an honor. But for this unexpected opportunity, as you know, in Philadelphia, I would be here for the foreseeable future. The only thing that makes it a little bit easier to leave is I know in turning it over to Michael Roush, you're in very good hands and that he'll continue to work with you with our firm's support and continue to support Brisbane in accomplishing your goals and in moving the city forward. With respect to your question, Councilmember Lentz, one of the goals that I talked about when I talked about the transition is making sure that the city had basically a seamless transition. And part of that is discussion with Michael Roush, the new city attorney, to describe the background that I've absorbed over the last year and a half in working with the city. Because it is my departure that requires that, there's no charge to the city for any of that time that goes into the transition.
Thank you for that.
Is that the only question you have?
No. Good.
Oh, okay.
No more questions. I'm going to comment later.
Yeah, okay. Ray? I have one small little point. We have previously reviewed this contract. We're not seeing this for the first time. I had a very small little suggestion. I'm wondering if you all would be comfortable with making this small change. On the first page, the second paragraph said, "Michael Roush shall be designated the city attorney and shall be the primary attorney, providing services under this agreement, starting September 12th, 2014." Is that okay? I thought it'd be useful to have the specific date of starting in the contract.
That's fine with me. And I don't think Michael would have any objection to that either.
Okay. Little amendment. Laurie, you have anything?
No, I don't have any questions. I reviewed the agreement. And I see that there were some small changes that Councilmember Miller had suggested about, in number nine, about attorney work product. And I saw that that change was made to more specifically state internal electronic files would be attorney work product, not all electronic files. So I just wanted to point out that change was made. And did you say the start date would be September 12th?
Right.
Okay. I think David said he was available through the 12th. So you might want to make it the 13th. They'll pass the baton at some point.
PM Pacific daylight time.
But I was glad to have the opportunity to meet with our new city attorney. And while I'm sad to see David go, I wish him the best. And I'm looking forward to working with Michael.
Terry?
Well, we had all discussed this in our closed session. And I don't think we reported out after that because there were no people there. But I am glad to welcome Michael aboard and look forward to working with you. And again, I'm sorry to see David leaving us. No other questions.
Okay. Michael, this is your time for rebuttal. And you can straighten us out on how do you pronounce your last name, whether it's Roush or Roush? Because I heard it in two different ways.
It is Roush. It gets mispronounced or pronounced many different ways, but it is Roush. Anyway, I want to thank you all again for considering me to be your city attorney. I look forward to working with each of you and all of you in the future. And just looking forward to the challenges ahead of us. And I know I'll do a great job for you. And thank you for considering me.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And David, I guess, thank you. You know, it was kind of a shock that you're leaving. I think we all understand under the circumstances that the opportunity that your wife got dragging you along. So it's been, it's been a pleasure the last 1.25 years, I guess we call it. And, you know, stay in touch, too. Drop a line, say hello. You can visit sunny California anytime you want in the winter.
Thank you.
Sure you may want to. Because you are a West Coast boy, right? And is your wife a West Coast girl?
Born and raised in San Francisco.
Oh. I have a question. This is for David. Are you going to stay associated with the firm?
My intent is to stay associated in a very part-time capacity from the time I leave in September through moving to Philadelphia, primarily so that I'll be available to Michael or to any of our other clients who may have questions that I can help answer based on my background and the work I've done on matters. Once I start with the University of Pennsylvania, that will be a full-time job. And I will not have a relationship with the firm after that point.
Okay. So Michael can't hire you after that period begins in Philadelphia. Okay. It was not clear to me that you were going to sever your relationship. But so what are you going to be doing there exactly?
Teaching.
No?
I'll be associate general counsel for the University of Pennsylvania, working primarily with the medical school. And there's a new Penn Center for Innovation that works with licensing and technology of inventions within the University of Pennsylvania and venture capital and startups. And so I'll be advising and working with that group as well.
Probably mean some patent work as well?
Yes, I'll be reading patent books very quickly in the next couple of months.
All right. Well, good luck in that. Intellectual property. Yeah. Shouldn't we say Michael's experience, you know, what he's bringing to the... Yeah, I think that's appropriate. Michael, you want to come up and brag on yourself?
We're very impressed with your background and...
Thank you again.
What you should know about.
Michael Roush. Prior to my appointment here, I was city attorney for the city of Pleasanton for 21 years. I began serving there in 1988. Before that, I was an assistant city attorney for the city of Vallejo. When I retired from the city of Pleasanton, I've been doing some work for a number of different cities throughout the Bay Area, including the city of Stockton, city of San Ramon. Also did some fill-in work for the city of San Luis Obispo. Also have served as general counsel for a couple of oversight boards. So I have been practicing law for almost 38 years now, and all of it in the municipal law section. So I have a very extensive background in land use and planning. That's primarily what I did. Even though you're a generalist to a certain extent, a city attorney, Pleasanton over the years has had a lot of land use-related issues. And I was very involved in a number of projects there, such as a development or help assisting with the Hacienda Business Park, the Stone Ridge Mall, the development of what is called the Bernal property, which resulted in the city being able to get 300 acres that Bernal or the city is developing as community park and open space. So involved in quite a bit of that. But obviously, also doing a lot of work with public safety, finance, water and wastewater. The city's been involved for a number of years in some wastewater issues in order to limit the exponential growth that was going out in the Tri-Valley area in the 1980s and the early 1990s. So I feel that I can bring to the city and to the community that kind of experience. Hopefully, be of some asset to you with respect as you consider the Baylands and other projects. And I think that experience will be of some help and some use. I'm hoping that it will be. I look forward to it.
Great. Welcome forward to it as well, right? Yeah, we do, too. Absolutely. Okay, so council's pleasure.
Well, you know, I'd just like to comment that I've enjoyed... Well, you know, I'd just like to comment that I've enjoyed working with David the last couple of years. You always conduct yourself with impeccable professionalism, and whenever I felt I needed sound legal advice, you know, perspective, you always provided it to me, and I always felt confident with what you delivered. And so, yeah, looking forward to, you know, moving on with Michael. Of course, you know, we had some projects that we're working on as a council with you, and it would have been nice to finish some of those things, but I know we're going to be in great hands with Michael, and I wish you the best of luck with you and your wife and your family.
Terry?
No.
Okay, council's pleasure.
Move approval of the city attorney service contract with Renee Sloan Holzman Secai.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, welcome aboard, Michael. And David, we'll see you in a year. See, I have a winner back there. Okay, item D, which is receive update on National Preparedness Month activities and provide comments and direction as appropriate. Randy?
Good evening once again. Here we are in 2014, National Preparedness Month, just a week beyond a fairly significant earthquake happening in American Canyon, and you see the council chambers overflowing with citizens wondering what we're doing to prepare earthquakes. That's obviously not the case. There's not a single person here, and it reflects an ongoing challenge we have with emergency services, and that's across the country. It's not just here in Brisbane. It's gaining our citizens' attention and getting on the top of their important-to-do list to prepare, especially once you get beyond the 72-hour window after an earthquake has happened. People just start to put it out of mind. They imagine that disaster is not going to occur again. So as I noted in the staff report, in past years, cities across the country were asked to prepare resolutions. I think we came to a realization that that really wasn't doing particularly very much, that citizens were not taking note of that and doing anything. This year, FEMA has put together a fairly robust program that takes people through baby steps. We're posting that on our website. We're going to be posting that on the bulletin board. We're hoping that we can get people's attention. Any step that you can take is a good step. Going to Costco, not necessarily my favorite provider, going to Target, going to any of those providers and getting an emergency services kit, throwing it in the back of your car is a great way to start. As I've told this council on numerous occasions, one of the best things you can do for your wife is to steal a pair of her sneakers and throw them in the back of the car that she drives, so that if there ends up being an earthquake in this area and she's a lady who wears heels, she might be able to walk out of the incident and not be walking in very uncomfortable shoes. So that's what we're going to be doing. You'll be seeing the signs up around town. I certainly hope that the council has taken those individual actions for preparedness and that you promote it with your citizens at large, so I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Council questions? Ray? I have a question.
Sure.
One of the things you note is that we used to declare September Preparedness Month.
Yes, sir.
Somehow, or that hasn't been happening recently?
We did it through last year. We did it through 2013.
Yeah, so why can't we do that again? I was just thinking that, you know, we could just pass a motion declaring September, you know, month of preparedness and encouraging the staff to do whatever appropriate outreach is feasible, or, you know, something like that. Would that be a problem, or is that?
I don't think it's a problem, sir. I think that what FEMA's perspective is on is that after being done it for a number of years, I think since probably 2009 or 2010, they just didn't see that that was generating any positive trends, so that they're focusing their efforts on other things. They're focusing on their efforts on trying to get the word out differently instead of just trying to do it directly through those.
But I was just thinking that at least we could, you know, we're asserting our concern, and Brisbane obviously is in a very high earthquake danger area.
Absolutely.
And, you know, here's an opportunity. All we need to do is pass a motion and say, hey, you know, would the council consider this important, and we hope the staff will do whatever education is feasible of the citizenry. I think, Randy, you and I talked about doing that next month.
Next month is earthquake preparedness month, sir.
Yeah, so we were
So I'm not opposed to that, and I think we can have a lot of conversation about really great ideas, but I really think that if we're trying to put something out to the citizens, I think that if we put out personal messages, I think if the mayor were to put something out in the luminary and say, "This is National Preparedness Month, and here's what I've done, and I encourage you all to look at what you need to do," I think that would be more compelling. People hearing that message would say, "Wow, okay, I can do that, too." But I'm not opposed to resolutions. I think, you know, they're fine and they're one, just a matter of
I was just thinking of a motion.
Sure.
Which then the mayor could refer to.
Okay, sure. Yes, sir. I mean, I appreciate the support. I just have trouble getting people to move forward.
Yeah, it's a good idea, but, I mean, we could tie it in with next month. Well, that's okay, too.
Sure. Yeah, they're so coincidentally tied together here.
Yeah, sure.
And I'm wondering, what do we do at the Community Day in the Park in October? Because I think that might be a good opportunity, you know, it's kind of fresh in everyone's mind, the recent earthquake, and it would be good if we don't already do so to have, you know, a table where the city talks about, you know, what steps.
We do, ma'am. We have an entire public safety booth. Depending on people's availabilities, we've had Red Cross there, those activities. We've had the SPCA there promoting animal rescue and such. We certainly have our certs, our local Brisbane certs there. We've got the Office of Emergency Services there. Typically, the police department shares the booth, and then the fire department, fire prevention folks are also there. So we've done that every year.
And are we specifically telling people, here's what you need to do to prepare for an earthquake?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. That's what the certs are there for.
Okay.
You know, Lori and I are on a subcommittee of emergency preparedness or disaster preparedness, and we've really kind of yet to meet, and I know, you know, we've kind of talked a little bit and have some ideas about some things that we can do that currently we don't really do. And perhaps, you know, in the upcoming months, we could kind of meet and formalize some things to really come together with some plans, because, you know, anything that we could do, and this is more of some logistical ideas that we have and run them to your staff and see what we can do about that, you know.
I think it's a great idea, sir. I'm assuming the city manager will ask Ms. Ricks to check both your calendars and all the time you do that.
I mean, I don't want to, you know, throw any unnecessary meetings on, you know, an already pretty packed agenda for staff, but, you know, this is something that really
That's an important one.
It's absolutely, you know what, sir? It's one of those things that if you don't do it, you wonder why you haven't been doing it. It's the same mantra that I try and give people all the time. Every person that we help prepare is one less victim that we have during an event, and that's critical. That is the force multiplier that you really need in every community. So I'm all in favor of it.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, Clark.
Any other ideas?
Yeah, if I may. So, you know, Lori brought up, you know, the idea of having, you know, more awareness at the Community Day in the Park. And of course, we already do a lot of that stuff. Are we, do we ever pass anything out? Sometimes people, you know, if they get something, you know, I was thinking like if there was a small bottle of water that had, you know, like a message, "Do you have enough water in a, you know, an emergency?" You know, it's some kind of small little thing that people can get, and they take it home, and it's there. To me, that, you know, that's a huge marketing tool that companies use to get their word out. Is that something that maybe FEMA or the county in part of, you know, some of their programs that we could partner with?
We have those, sir, and we've done different events. We've done different pieces of it. One of the things that I've really tried to do more with our community emergency response teams over the years is to get them to be able to go into people's houses and help them prepare. I think, surprisingly enough, people are more prepared than they know. We all have 50 to 75 gallons of water in our house. It's sitting in your hot water heater. You just have to occasionally flush that thing and know how to drain it out and know how to put a little bit of bleach in there to disinfect the water in case it's been sitting in with something else. Most of us have a huge supply of food in our cabinets. You may not like all those lima beans in the far back, and that's why they've gotten pushback there, but when you get hungry enough, a lima bean is pretty tasty if you cook it up on your barbecue grill and throw a little salt on it. It's edible, so we can survive. Most people tend to have camping gear, things like that. Part of it is just organizing it so that you know where it is and so that you can find it, and you're not trying to rummage your way through a house that's had collapsing and issues. Sometimes it's just bringing people's awareness of that. I personally have always believed that the biggest challenge we have and the barrier is that so many of us commute, with the exception of myself, I'm clearly the one who's got a mild door-to-door commute for my work, but people, I'll take my wife, for instance, who commutes down to Mountain View. That's probably more common. That's probably a bigger challenge where you really need to be aware that you could be somewhere in your vehicle somewhat stranded because roads have collapsed. I'm very diligent about making sure that she's always got half a tank of gas. I'm very diligent about making sure that she's got an updated, you know, emergency preparedness kit in the back of her car, and to the extent that we can get more people to be aware of that. And we don't need to be Chicken Little, the sky is falling. We just need to be prepared. You live in an area where there might be an earthquake, keep some gas in your car. Keep a little bit of food in your car. If you were traveling up through the Sierras over the wintertime, you might have a blanket in there, a little bit of food, a little bit of way to survive if you get stuck for a day or two. Those are just prudent planning evolutions, and that's the message we're trying to get out to people.
Good, good stuff. Okay, so this doesn't require anything other than the feedback, I think, that we gave and got. So we'll move on to all business, which is review and accept the white paper member random from the city attorney on conceptual Brisbane Baylands environmental impact report and planning review process.
Mr. Mayor, since this is going to be probably a little bit of a discussion, can we take a five-minute break prior to going into that?
Sure. Yep. Let's break for five minutes.
Thank you.
Fifty-nine, fifty-eight, fifty-seven.